To the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was promised on Thursday, July 7th, conditions of the double times and star ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the double town hall bulletin board, copies aren't part of municipal purpose.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord.
Okay, everybody, I would like to welcome you to our December 13th meeting. It is the first, and I think the only, meeting for the month of December, being that it's the first meeting in the month, it's also our combined conference/regular meeting, which means that any council members or members of the administration can put anything they want on the agenda for discussion. However, that discussion is in and among the council with our professionals. While the public is here to listen, they can take note, and if you have something that piques your curiosity, you most certainly can discuss that during your public commenting portion of the meeting. But right now, while we have these discussions, they are only in and among ourselves. With that being said, I don't believe that we have anything on for discussion. Any council member can put anything on. We have nothing for today. Moving right along.
Tommy?
Tommy? Good? Check that box. Report to the manager.
As our last meeting in 2022, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and certainly a happy, healthy year. Just a few items that I want to report. First item, I certainly hope it doesn't ruin anyone's Christmas, but it's been brought to the council's attention several times that our DPW, when we do a water job, we do not replace the existing soil, and we bring in new dirt, creates force, and that's wrong. And again, it was brought to this council's attention a few times, and it actually said, PSEG, they don't do it that way, they use the same soil. So, we had a meeting with PSEG and on a unrelated issue, but I asked them, I said, you know, what do you do when you operate the ground? And I received this email from a, one of the site supervisors, and it says, Anthony, as discussed at a meeting, PSEG prefers method of restoration for our main and service project is removed and replaced. We can remove the old soils, ask for concrete and replace it with dry sand, BGA, and say it's state-based. So the point that I'm trying to say is, they, what we have been doing and what we've presented to the council, we've been doing is actually correct, and that's exactly what PSEG does. They said when they replace a gas line, sometimes they get to use the existing soil because it's not a water, it's not a water break, and that soil is not wet. So I did, when I did receive this in writing, I did want to share with the council because it has been brought up to your attention on several times. The next item?
The Minister of Energy, the DEP, has also clarified that to us as well.
That is correct. I just wanted to just bring that point home. Last week, we went out for auction. Willie and company did a great job. We sold 15 pieces of equipment that ranged, the oldest was 1988, that's like 34 years. There was a piece of equipment that we had $400 for that piece. The youngest piece of equipment was 2003, and we got another $600 for that. But we got rid of 15 pieces of, so to speak. We generated close to $20,000, and that's just basically in line with, you know, again, everything goes up, so we try to come up with initiative ways of bringing in revenue, which brings up to the next item. January 1st, the township is switching over payroll companies, going with a new company, ADS, they're very municipal-friendly, so to speak. We had ADP for so many years. What I want to tell the council is that just for the first pay and the first pay only, the employees and yourselves will not get a direct deposit into your account. First pay has to be a hard check. After that first pay on, I believe it's like January, after we get that first pay, we'll distribute the checks, we're not going to put them in and out. Yeah, I think we'd have a bunch of paycheck trouble for that one. But after that first pay, where you actually get a hard copy, hard check, everything goes right back to direct deposit where you are today. You don't have to refill out any forms, you don't have to do anything. So it's ADS, this is a company that we approved back in November. And the only other thing that I would add to that is that we're pretty much in a $50,000 savings compared to what we're paying today for payroll over the course of a year. So $50,000 here, $20,000 here, again, we're just trying to be cost-efficient, cost-effective. Our CFO will be at the next meeting to discuss the budget, but these are just, again, we can't prevent gasoline from going up, we can't prevent oil from going up, but certainly if we come up and we're as creative and be to generate revenue, that's basically what we're trying to do here. That's some small examples.
And that's basically my report. Speaking of the budget and revenue, I saw today a bunch of municipalities are meeting with the governor's office because the health insurance has gone up 24%, it's going to crush them. So, the state said he got a $6 billion surplus, and a bunch of these mayors that he's meeting with are advocating to get some of that back as a one-time revenue source, I guess. All these different municipalities are on the state benefits plan. We're not, but our insurance costs go up. I'm wondering if the state is going to do that for all municipalities or just those that are on the public plan? But if we can find out, we can maybe start advocating to our legislators. Certainly do a little research on that. We say whatever anybody else gets, we should get. Okay? Anybody have any questions for the manager?
Yeah, through the chair. Anthony, Anthony, just had some questions relative to overtime, and have we looked at the possibility of hiring more firemen, people to offset some of that overtime? The last I heard, it's, you know, we're talking huge number here.
So, councilman, the last time we sat down with the fire chief to discuss personnel and actual numbers in general, we were hoping, we were hoping for the SAFER grant. This is a grant specifically allocated to hire new firefighters, they pick up the cost for the first three years or so, and we were hopeful that we were going to be receiving a million dollars, $2 million. Unfortunately, within the last probably 15 days, we did get a written confirmation that we did not get any allocation in the federal grants as a SAFER grant. So, we were kind of on, we were in idle, waiting to see if that money was going to come by. And I know your last question or one of your emails was pertaining that, obviously, the amount of overtime that we're spending versus hiring. I asked the chief to look into a formula to see what the council may or may not realize is that right now, we're probably going to close 2022, spending probably $700,000 in overtime. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's about a couple of people, at least.
So, the $700,000 is something that obviously is a concern. And it's not even so much, it's a concern, obviously, because it has a major impact on the budget. The other concern is that there's so much overtime, is that Chief Paul O'Vary is here tonight, and so I mean, sometimes it's tough to get, it's actually tough to give the overtime away, because there's so many hours. So certainly, I think it's a conversation that we have to have, we could certainly should put it on the agenda, and we can discuss it, and have Chief Paul O'Vary, I know, he's a numbers guy, and there has to be like a break-even point where it makes sense, where we can reduce overtime, and at the same time, you know, show a savings in the budget.
Thank you. I think we need to do that quick.
Anybody else for the manager? No? Okay, we're gonna move on. Next on the agenda is the report of the mayor. I'd like to start with some past events. We had our Bellville Energy Assistance Day on Friday, December 2nd, that was very widely received. A lot of people were there, I think we're going to be doing that again. We also recently had a blood drive, that went very well. Last past week, we had a groundbreaking for a development complex that's going to be down on Washington Avenue, it's going to anchor that side of Washington Avenue. Very happy to see an old warehouse be repurposed. The fireman, I was actually there, fireman had a nice crowd for Santa. Santa had a busy day last Saturday, not only was at the firehouse, then he needed a little rest, and then he went on to our winter festival and Christmas tree lighting. As you saw my social media posts about that, it was a great effort, a great combination with the township and the school district coming together for that. There was literally something there for everybody. There was obviously the tree lighting, but we had the Clydesdales, not one, not two, three Clydesdales. We had the trackless train, we had famous Graziano chestnuts. Police department had a great display, 32 different community organizations lined what we call Candy Lane, Lane? Candy Lane?
Candy Lane.
Candy Lane?
Candy Cane Lane.
Candy Cane, Candy Cane.
Say both the words.
That, that's really all where, it was, it was, we are told that they estimated between 2,000 and 3,000 people in attendance. It was, it was probably one of our best ones. Last night, I had the opportunity to swear in the new Italian-American Club members, they had a packed house over at the senior center, and today, I was with the Tuesday Club at Nanina's for their senior Christmas party. That's past. Upcoming events, tomorrow, pack a police car. Told chief that that was a rain, a rain, a weather, doom.
They decided to...
Because the chief is not big on rain, rain dates, I've learned. But yet, we have a rain date for, okay, just want to make sure I got all my ducks in a row. So tomorrow, pack a police car, first time we're doing that, it's going to be at Shop Right, between 10:00 and 4:00, all the, everything collected is going to a soup kitchen?
Uh, yeah.
If it's food, right?
Food, pantry, food pantry.
Food pantry, I'm sorry, yep. Which we have two. Bellville doesn't have anything official, but we have two churches that we support for that. And then Friday, Friday, January 6th, be our third or fourth year doing Three Kings Day, looking forward to that. It's going to be probably same place, same time, but the flyer is being worked on now. Saw a draft of that today. That's going to be good. Some news, I know the manager mentioned about DPW and some of the road jobs, he brought up DPW, but I just want to bring up DPW because they, along with the school district staff, really did a great job. I see Bobby's here today. Really did a great job with the winter festival, setting everything up. It's the small touches that now we're starting to see, which are great, the bales of hay to sit on, the Christmas lights, the decorations, all those small little things, and I get a chance in the setup to spend time with the guys, and they seem to like doing it. I mean, it's, it's really a great effort. Today, Argentina won, any soccer fans? So I was on site at Alberto's today, our official Argentina headquarters. He will be open this coming Sunday at 10:00 a.m., as will several other bars and restaurants in the area. This is certainly the last council meeting of the year. I want to also mention hydrate, flushing is going on through December 15th. Letters to Santa, the deadline is December 15th. So far, my, my office has been in, my people have been in contact, constant contact with Santa's people. We collaborate on different things, and what we're doing is, we want to make sure if there's a special need or a special request that comes through, Santa's elves communicate that to us, and we are in constant communication with the North Pole, there's no time difference. But we've had some, we've had some interesting ones. We've had a couple interesting ones, to say the least. We had a, Santa has informed us that there's a family of six children in town, five girls, one boy. Five girls would like Barbie dolls, and the one boy just wants one morning of peace and quiet. I'm not sure if Santa can deliver upon that one, but we're gonna, we're gonna work. And then chief, I gotta, I gotta report something here, chief. Santa sent this back to me. We had a clever little one, clever little girl, attempt to bribe Santa with a dollar in her letter. So, clever little one. She, uh...
She's gonna please us.
And, you know, I like the, I like the fact that, you know, she says that she's been okay the past year. She hasn't been great, she hasn't been perfect, but she's been okay. Santa is on this, even though I have it in my possession, Santa is still on that, and we're gonna have to figure out, chief, how we get the dollar back to her, but. So it's been really nice, that's the deadline, it's going to be the 15th again. We're looking for any special needs, any special requests that come through so that we can have our Bellville elves step in and help out with that. Anchor program is extended, I'm going to do a mailing town-wide about this, the anchor program has been extended to January 31st, 2023, and that's, again, it's money that's available for us. It's a replacement program, it's, depending on your income level, most people are going to qualify, whether you're a renter, you're a homeowner, you're going to qualify. We do have information on the township website about that, I'm going to be trying to do at least a mailing to seniors to make sure they participate. And lastly, back to the chief, reports once again that Cowardly Grinch is on the loose again, so I'm going to expect you to put your best men and women on this case. We don't want the Grinch flying around Bellville stealing any Christmas joy. So, maybe patrol division lookout order is, we should be able to look out for anybody green running down the streets. We're on that. All right? That's it for my report. This is the first meeting in a month, so again, it's, we have committee reports, we don't have any official standing committees here. Any council member that wants to jump into a specific topic or subject can do so, so therefore, I usually start with the deputy mayor, see if he has anything to report.
Nothing on this topic.
Nothing. Councilman? Councilwoman? Councilman?
Yes, thank you, mayor. As you said, we have our little ad hoc committees here, so I guess I'm on the adult recreation league committee since I asked a question about it at the last meeting.
You did, two meetings ago, yeah.
Yep, so I do have a little update on that, I spoke with the manager a few times since then, and it looks like our first adult recreation league will be Dodgeball.
Whoa.
So, we're working on the flyer, that's coming out soon.
So the draft of the flyer?
Yeah, draft, good.
Draft, yeah, we have a draft.
Yeah, and, but we'll, we'll come up with some dates, maybe for the next council meeting, when we could start accepting applications, teams, whatever we figure out, you know, sponsors for teams, something like that.
Willie volunteered to be the captain of the town hall team.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Are we going to get like a pickleball team, maybe?
We could do that, we could do that.
This ring?
Yeah, yeah.
Pickleball league, yeah.
That is...
Where are we going to have Dodgeball?
Uh, so we're playing Friendly House.
Yeah, oh, we're going to use it for something?
Yeah, finally, yeah, finally. And now, I will forego the rest of my minutes to our...
Yield?
Grant? Yeah, I will yield it to our grant coordinator, Gabby Benatini, she has a little update for us on some, some grant stuff.
Ms. Benatini, can you just use this microphone here?
Sure. Do you want to hand these out to us?
Sure.
I think we really have to move on.
We have like two minutes, just, just to let you know.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do that. This way you can still work it down the block.
Get scared.
Take one, pass it down, right?
Pass one down?
Pretty much, all right.
Yeah, just give me a, go to it.
So we have, we have an extension on that temporary demonstration project.
Oh, nice.
Because that should have been finished, but we were allowed an extension because we need to agree on artwork for that.
Is that the middle school intersection?
Yes. So what we received was the temporary demonstration project design, that was through the New Jersey TPA, and we're getting some assistance with the Borges facility and some other transportation associations. So the reason why we want to do this project, and it is temporary because it's exactly what it is, it's temporary, it's just an idea to set up an intersection for pedestrian safety with bump outs, a colorful image, and some communities are doing that, you know, to allow for the visibility and the markings of a, an intersection, it's a very busy intersection, it's got the middle school there. The mural that we came up with was the cherry blossom, but it's not a pink blossom, it's a blue and a gold blossom, the school colors. So if it works out, the idea behind this project is it could be done in other places. The other underlying things behind the project is that we're applying for other grants that are bigger, bigger and supportive of these grants. Last week, I was able to go to the luncheon where our police department received their bronze certification, so I think you guys are probably going to commend them for getting that. They were also part of the Safe Roots to School, every elementary school received a certificate because they've been very involved in that program. So out of this project, of the Safe Roots to School, and soon, the Safe Roots to School transportation grant will become available. So by doing these little projects and things to better our pedestrian safety, you then move yourself into better chances to receiving some of the funding. So we've already received the Safe Roots to Transit grant, we received the Washington Avenue branding study, we just applied for the other Transportation Alternatives grant, which is a very large grant for Greylock Parkway, keep your fingers crossed, but as you can imagine, very competitive, hundreds of applications, and realistically, only 20 to 30 are chosen. So that's it with the project, we just wanted you all to know about it. Easy Ride is on board with this also, because it does include a member of every department, and since they are working with the police department, the police department collaborative, the school district, the municipality, everybody's on board. Everybody's watching to see how we implement this project. The mayor, Patterson, received the Safe Roots to School grant last year to upgrade every intersection around every single school. So these are the kinds of things that, this is what the action takes us to the next level. So I just wanted to make you all aware. So we just need an okay on the artwork to be ready to go and finalize it, and that comes from the township engineer and Frankie Natare on the police department.
There's several options, which one are we considering?
So that's up for discussion, I don't know how colorful you want to be or how simple you want to be, yes, that's sort of what we're looking at.
I don't see any of that, but. It would be the whole intersection being painted?
It would be the whole, so the blue or the bump outs where, so if you notice, I've seen that we're painting the curves, right? So an idea is that you now develop your own curb cutouts by painting the whole street, and then you line it with ballards, and what that does is it creates the buffer for pedestrians and a smaller area for vehicles, so that vehicles can't go around other vehicles to try and cross the intersection when other people are crossing. We also had a day in May where we also stood there and we observed dismissal at the middle school, and there were about 15 of us that watched this happen, you know, that day, and we all took notes.
Chaos, chaos, yeah.
The Transportation Authority actually sent us their notes, and that's how they came up with the plan. So you'll see that the, the information there, the guidance on how to do the project, was submitted. And we are the ones that are implementing the project, so it'll be a collaboration between the DPW, our artists, the students, and whomever else wants to be out that day to watch this happen. And we are planning to start hopefully again in March or April, when the weather gets nice. And that's really it, if you have any other questions?
Any questions?
No, I think it's great, thank you, Gabby.
So that update was that we did submit that other grant, so you do know that that was submitted, and we just received the Small History Grant.
Nice.
We're trying to increase visibility and decrease, you know, people getting hurt, basically.
Yeah, I just, Steve, so basically, when the kids get out of school, it's like a sea of kids walking down the street, cars are trying to go around them, we, the police department even blocks off the, the street, right, chief? So that car can't even get down there.
Yes.
So it's, it's a little dangerous situation, so this is...
I started, I instituted this, it's the school program.
Yeah.
It helps with the traffic, literally, not because if more kids that walk to school, the less parents and less cars are going to be there fighting for a parking spot.
Exactly, and everyone wants that front parking spot.
So I'm all in favor of the programs such as these, and again, anything that will encourage children to get back to walking to school and walking home, because it's healthy, and on, they get a lot of exercise from it, they get camaraderie with the fellow students, and it's, it's a win-win for everybody. But we need to make it safe for them to do so.
Yes, thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Anybody on the phone? Councilman Burke, Councilman Rovell? Committee reports?
I'm good.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Regular meeting of March 22nd, 2022.
Need a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion made in second, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Detany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melhan?
Yes.
Letter received from, letter received from Mayor Melhan, Romondo V. Contoro, Essex County, Office of Emergency Management Coordinator, we appointing Deputy Chief Gerard Corbal as Emergency Management Coordinator for the township of Bellville beginning January 1st, 2023, for a term of three years, term ending December 31st, 2025.
Cool. Next item on our agenda is ordinances, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Number one, public hearing and ordinance to amend ordinance number 3332, entitled, An Ordinance Adopting Rules and Regulations Governing the Appointment of Police Officers for Extra Duty Details Within the Township of Bellville.
Need a motion to open public hearing?
Motion.
Action. Motion made in second, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Detany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melhan?
Yes.
Ordinance number two for public hearing and ordinance to amend ordinance number 3157, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Need a motion to open public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion made in second to open public hearing, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Detany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melhan?
Yes.
Ordinance number two for public hearing and ordinance to amend ordinance number 3157, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Need a motion to open public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public hearing, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Detany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melhan?
Yes. We're open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only, if you have a question about this particular ordinance, please go forward, say your name and address for the record. Mr. Frank Anton.
Good evening. Once again, when I went on the agenda online, that format where I could look at the resolutions and the ordinances, I couldn't get it again. So I wouldn't have to ask these questions, but what are we, so what are we doing with this ordinance?
So this is a 50-cent increase for crossing guards, they are not part of any union, so every couple of years, when we negotiate the union contracts and amend their salaries for everybody else that's unionized, they are not. So they came to the manager, asked for a meeting, and asked for a 50-cent increase.
The last increase I received was 2018.
They have not had an increase in nearly five years.
All right, it's 50 cents an hour.
Increase.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only? Nope, nope. Hearing none, and just in a motion to close, move for final adoption.
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Detany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melhan?
Yes.
Ordinance number three. Ordinance number three for public hearing and ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances to the township of Bellville, chapter 8-6A, entitled, Four Ways Stop Interceptions Deserted.
Intain a motion to open for public commenting.
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Detany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melhan?
Yes. So once again, we're open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Mr. Joe?
Yeah, just the simple questions that have gone up there. That intersection is around the block from here in Greylock and Brimont, just a question, A lot of people just fly down that block there. Is it a possibility?
I'm sure it is. Chief is listening, so.
I see them in other towns. You've probably seen them around.
Or solar operated.
Especially on Greylock side.
Okay. Anybody else for this ordinance?
For his team, sorry, come on.
Just, sure. I believe you can stop your remarks, Mr. Droz.
Just wait till the other two members have the.
What about the two that are on the phone?
Well, I'll have to mail, email them, I suppose.
Got it, okay.
All right, before I address this particular ordinance, I just distributed a document to all members of the council and your legal council that delineates the legal procedure under the state of New Jersey for the adoption process for ordinances. At the last council meeting, I was.
You have a question about this particular ordinance?
I'm getting to it. The last council meeting, which dealt with the redevelopment of Kmart property, I was constantly interrupted and told that if I didn't ask questions, I was going to be forced to sit down. Want to draw your attention to this is title 40, 41A-101 ordinances, subsection B, part two. And it says, "All persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning the ordinance." Mr. Melham, it does not say questions only. It says explicitly, "All persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning the ordinance." As far as I'm concerned, and this may have to be decided by court of law, you deprived me of my constitutional, my civil rights.
The last part of that says concerning the ordinance. You're not speaking on this ordinance right now, sir.
This is the general process for any ordinance.
You're violating your own law right now. Do you have a question about this particular ordinance?
I'm going to comment on this ordinance in a moment. This is the general procedure for any ordinance.
You can't talk for 10 minutes and then comment on the ordinance. You have to comment on the ordinance.
This has to be discussed at this point because you're in violation of the law.
You can discuss it through a public commenting. Do you have a question about this particular ordinance?
I am going to, I have a comment to make about this particular ordinance.
But you have to say it now. Now's the time for that.
I am in support of this ordinance, but I just.
Thank you.
Mario and I happened to be on the same wave late here. I was going to express the same concern that because Greylock Parkway is not very well illuminated, that that stop sign should have the perimeter LED flashing lights.
Chief, Burke, he's on it.
I'm reiterating what Mario said, that in order, as a public safety concern, it should be all four directions, all four stop signs, but especially the ones on Greylock. Especially when this stop sign gets erected, it's going to come as a surprise to many of the motorists traversing Greylock Parkway. And I don't want, you know, especially for the people in the immediate area, cars slamming on brakes, possibly losing control of their vehicles. God knows what may happen. So as a public safety concern, I think the township should invest a few extra dollars. I've already gone online. These signs that are solar powered with perimeter lights are typically anywhere between $1,000 and $2,000. Not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, so.
But you only want that on your intersection. You don't want that town.
That's not my intersection.
Where you live. I know, that's where you live.
I'm in the fourth ward, but that particular intersection, Brimont, Greylock, is probably at least a quarter mile away from me. But just as for the whole sake of the community, there should be a lighted series of stop signs there so that everyone is given due pause to see that signage before they get to that intersection. So please, if you can, chief here as well, if you can make that happen. I think it would be great and we appreciate it.
We don't think it happens, the chief can, so we'll see. Thank you. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll adjourn a motion to close, move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second.
A motion made in second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DeTanyan.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance on the table. No motion? I'll adjourn a motion to move to open public commenting now.
Motion.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. DeTanyan.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. We're now open for public commenting. I'll ask anybody in the audience that wants to speak to please raise your hand, wait until your call upon. Ask you to please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to hopefully speak on what we think is township-related business. We would really appreciate that. Ma'am, you're first. Name and address, please, I'm sorry.
Mabel Christ, 143 Academy Street. So like I said, okay, 143 Academy Street. I just want to do this. Okay, so my name is Mabel Christ. I reside at 143 Academy Street, one of the four houses on Academy Street owned by the Coptic Church that on 12/7/21, Mayor Melham and his illegally appointed planning board membership voted to tear down. It is located between Hornblower and Washington Avenue, within the township of Bellevue, New Jersey, where my children are enrolled in the public school system. I stand before you tonight to inform you that as a result of the questionable passing of application PB 2116, the Coptic Church is evicting me and my children from an apartment that I have faithfully renting for the past 14 years. Therefore, before anyone on this council possess for any photos taken at the groundbreaking ceremony on the site where my home is now standing, I am asking that you, Mayor Melham, investigate the legitimacy of the illegally appointed planning board trying to grant the right to the Coptic Church to tear down my house in attempt to save my family from being forced out of the home and onto the street into the frigid, dismembered air. Thank you.
Thank you.
For translating, find Bell Street. On the resolution 14 to 24, I assume that's what you do annually, hire all different attorneys for different, in case you need them for different.
Every year you ask Mario and the answer is still the same.
Yes, I'm still going to ask anyway.
You did it when you sat here, by the way.
Just one thing, where was it advertised? That was advertised because I missed that one, but anyway. I believe you, but anyway, I just checked. The other thing, and I think if anybody took any donation from any of your firms, they would, it would be, you would know, you know, you do check that. Make sure they didn't donate to any council people. I think you have one year or so.
Do I check it? No.
Does anybody check it or do they check it on their rent before they, before they submit a bid?
Yeah, it's part of the bid documents.
Okay, no problem. What I, the other thing, I noticed that in the newspaper you have the end of the year tax sales. And what was very disturbing is I counted, if I counted right, 98 LLCs are behind under taxes. So my, the reason I'm bringing this up is if you got 98 LLCs, I know some of them, they're doing redevelopment. My question is, if they are delinquent in their taxes, are they still going to get a tax abatement? So in other words, I have an LLC, but I got a five-year abatement. Is it still in effect and I'm behind on my taxes? And how do we, how do we make sure that they're not getting the abatement?
The answer is no answer, I think. It's not possible.
If they're applying for the abatement, they can't get the abatement if their taxes.
Well, does that get it first and then, then they like.
If they get it work, if they get it first, then they have the abatement and their taxes are different and they just fall into place with everyone else. They don't lose the abatement if they don't pay, once they get it, they don't pay their taxes. They just, their taxes are just different and they still get, they still get the abatement, but their taxes go into sale just like anybody else who doesn't, who don't pay the taxes.
No, I know what you're saying, but I think that states because you get the abatement now. Oh, well, you know what, I could be lapsidaisy on my.
That's not within it. Unfortunately, that's not within our control. The law states what happens.
I know what you're saying, but I'm just saying, but it states though.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with you that if you don't, I would agree with you. If you don't pay your, if you're getting an abatement and don't pay your taxes, you should lose the.
Right, exactly. That's the point I'm bringing up. There's nothing we can do about that. Are you?
State law.
All right.
Unfortunately, but I absolutely agree with you.
Well, they're not paying taxes.
Well, no, they are. No, no, no. He's talking, he's talking about the five-year. He's.
Right, the five-year, that's correct.
So they would have 20%, zero, 20%.
Because I think you just recently revoked somebody's.
We did.
Abatement not too long ago. That's the reason I was bringing this up.
Yes, and they, and they asked for that revocation to be revoked and the mayor and council voted not to because he had not paid his taxes beforehand and actually wasn't paying taxes on another property at any age. So it was not revoked. He did not, he does not have that abatement.
I understand again, for that states though, then they fall behind. But anyway, there's 98 of them, if I counted correctly. And I was listening to what Steve Rovell said before. If I understood it correctly, if you're paying that much overtime, wouldn't it have been better to hire somebody? And are we operating on one or two ambulances right now?
We operate on one ambulance. We have two.
Well, why not two? Could no manpower?
That's a great question. No, we have manpower. We have manpower for the house. House has X amount of people. I actually was going to have this discussion in public when we figured out if we were going to get that grant. So to answer your question, if we just went and hired four more or five more firemen, you would probably say, did you check any grants first? But now you're saying that we checked grants. Unfortunately, we thought we were going to get the answer in July or August. We just got the answer that we did not get the grant. So the first question was, can we get a grant? That grant would have been multi-millions of dollars, would have covered salaries for X amount of firemen for so many different years. We just found out literally within the last week that we did not get that grant. Now, assuming as we come to the budget, people like myself, deputy mayor, Vinnie, would sit there and look at the budget and see the overtime number and ask the manager and the chief to come up with a better plan than paying all that overtime.
No, no, because I think I brought this up once before. I think the number is, historically, it's always been about 70 firemen. And if I understood it correctly, you're down to like 60 or something like that. But shouldn't we be running two ambulances instead of one for public safety reasons?
I brought that up. I believe we should.
I think we should.
All right. Anybody else for public commenting? Mr. Frank Antoni.
First, I'd like to, this young lady spoke on Academy Street being evicted. Years ago, I brought up the planning board that the Coptic Church, all them homes that they're renting, they're not paying taxes. All these years, they haven't paid taxes on it. The planning board wouldn't hear me because I couldn't at the time prove that they're renting them. But tonight we got proof that they've rented this young lady alone 14 years. They've been making plenty of money and not paying a penny taxes. And those uses renting to a nice family like her and all the others they rent, there's three or five houses, I believe, they're making a nice profit. So we can recoup some tax money from them because that was not church services that they were using their homes for. I hope you look into that. Also, Mr. Iacona read a letter from Public Service because some people complained about the filling of puddle. That was me. What I didn't hear him say in the Public Service letter, if I heard correctly, they fill it, they remove and they fill it with fresh dirt and light sand. I did not hear the word gravel. Am I mistaken?
Yes, so they, what they specifically said is they replace it with DGA and a stab base, which I don't know what that is and I can start to get back to you on the DGA.
The other thing that you observe them, which I filled puddle or anything I've done in 50 years of construction, Public Service compacts every foot. They put a foot of wood in there, they compact it. Another foot and they compact it. Now, when I open my laundry, I don't want to go near the middle school. I go down Home Street, over Hornblower and down Academy. Go down Hornblower, I mean, Home Street and turn over there. Every excavation they fill settles. So all I do is go down, ba-boom, 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 wherever. Because the gravel, and I keep telling you, I don't know if anyone understands it. The gravel has voids in it. So the vibration of cars and trucks, the surrounding soil from that excavation fills in the gravel and every one of these, they settle. Public Service compacts it. Their final filling doesn't settle. Next thing is resolutions 14 to 24. Mr. Droz brought it up about that. I hope you check the pay-to-play because you don't know, but I just know one at least of these professionals has given you, I believe, a $480, $490 contribution and that's above the $300 limit. So your consigliere who sits right next to you, maybe he would advise you, you got to be careful to see if any of these 10, 14 people are donating to you before you give them contracts. Because you've already violated the pay-to-play law several times. And the other thing is, all this development is destroying our suburban character. It's destroying the township. We can't move anymore, not only Bellevue, Montclair and Bloomfield. My daughter moved to Roseland 10 years ago, 15, 20 minutes, 8.1 miles. Now 45 minutes to an hour if we're lucky.
And Mr. Frank Antoni, which development in particular do you associate all that traffic to?
As you said, mainly right now.
Which one?
It's Montclair and Bloomfield.
Bellevue, you said traffic is tough in Bellevue. Which development in Bellevue is contributing to that?
I'm telling you, Montclair and Bloomfield and all this development under construction is just going to exacerbate it even more. Right now with their development, and because I've said many times, we're a land law community. You can only get into Bellevue through the Rucker Bridge or two and a half miles in Nutley Earth, four miles in Newark. All these people that they claim, these luxury apartments in Bloomfield and Montclair, all of these New York things, and they're right. So the New York people have no way to get home except Bellevue Avenue. There's a parking lot every single night.
Do you need to wrap up?
Look at all the articles. Montclair, parking is a problem, all right? There, most of the limited space are loading zones, customers won't park, walk away. One merchant, all the businesses are hurting. There's 13 empty stores there.
I do need to wrap up.
Now 70 to 80%. He's losing tens of thousands of dollars. He can't pay his employees or his vendors.
Thank you.
The Bloomfield Avenue Design, another article. These are all about Montclair articles. The people are up in arms. Now, a citizens group, and they hired a lawyer to fight that Lacawanna project.
Mr. Frank Antoni, thank you. You're out of time, sir.
Thank you so much.
Well, I'm telling you, in Belvo, you gotta stop this overdevelopment. Right now, what's going on in ShopRite, this, south of ShopRite, the 268 unit, the 115, the other...
Thank you, Mr. Fran Tantone, you're out of time.
Drive there.
Thank you.
You cannot put all the employees from the motorcycle mall, park on that side, well, where are they gonna park when the garbage is on?
Thank you.
You got pork planting and you're hurting, you're killing the town, and we're gonna suffer huge taxes when you think they're in there.
Anybody else for public commenting? Mr. Shaw?
Starting with my five minutes now. I hope you all take a moment to read the document I gave you, which explains the correct legal procedure for the public to engage in the approval process for ordinances. It explicitly says again that all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning the ordinance, it does not say you can only ask questions about the ordinance or express your approval or lack thereof. This is gonna be upheld in all future meetings, and if you, if you try to deny me or anyone else their civil rights under state law, there will be consequences. In regard to the Coptic Church case, not only was the Coptic Church collecting rent on multiple, at least three buildings, tax-free, they were tax-exempt, but I know for a fact that during my tenure on the Board of Ed, every year, those properties were sending multiple students to our public school system, so they weren't paying any taxes whatsoever, but yet they were deriving benefits from our school system, it's outrageous. I had asked about, over two weeks ago, about the fact that the adopted budget and the user-friendly budget for 2022 is missing from the township website. Under state law, those documents have to be publicly provided. All other communities around us, Nutley, Bloomfield, Verona, Montclair, they not only made those documents available, but did so in May and June of this year. You have not made the adopted budget and the user-friendly budget available. Tomorrow, unless I get assurance that those documents are gonna be made public post haste, tomorrow I'm contacting the DCA and the, all the other respective offices in the state to alert them about your non-compliance. As Mr. Fran Tantone pointed out, and Mario too, you have multiple resolutions tonight to essentially retain legal counsel. Mr. Melham, I know for a fact, because I've gone through the ELEC documents, at least three of the seven firms represented in those resolutions gave you significant campaign contributions. Under New Jersey ELEC law and ethics law, you're precluded for one year from having any role in awarding any municipal contracts to any vendor that provided you with 300 or more dollars in the lead-up to the 2022 election. So I know you'll ignore it, you're gonna vote robotically for these folks because you're indebted to them, but you do so at your peril, because if you do, not only will the list of attorneys and all their contributions be published tomorrow, but this will also be sent to the appropriate state authorities. Lastly, I want to, I'm hoping that for once, for once in your life, you do the right thing, and as far as Resolution Number 11 is concerned, which involves the street dedication for former Mayor Ray Kimball, that you approve this resolution. Kudos to Mr. Braziano for introducing it, it's long overdue, this should have been done in 2019 when Mayor Kimball passed away, unfortunately, at that time, but at least it's happening now, and I hope it's a unanimous vote, I hope all of you, all seven of you endorse this resolution. But my bet is, is that you'll either abstain, or if you will, just outright say no, but we'll know in a few moments. Thank you.
You'll probably be wrong again. Anybody else for public commenting?
Mr. Melham?
Nope, on tap, yep.
Good evening, Primal Fleishman, 33 Main Street. No complaints tonight, I know, shocking.
Motion closed to me.
I know, seriously. I just wanted to thank the police chief and the fire chief and the police department, the fire department, and the mayor and council. I know we've battled through the year, you know, hopefully, nothing personal, and again, I don't hold anything personal, hopefully, nobody holds anything personal, I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and hopefully, we can all get together next year and actually do much more good for Belvo. And unfortunately, we were able, we were not able to make the tree lighting the other night, we had another engagement, but I saw the pictures, again, you know I don't fight you when you do something for the town, and, you know, just keep up the good work, as much wish everybody a Happy Holidays, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll take a motion to close?
Motion, second.
Motion made at second, clerk, call or roll?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Let's take a moment for the consent, everybody.
We're gonna pull 11?
11, I got 11. I'm good with everything else. Just 11? Anybody else? Yep.
Take the motion for the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion made at second to move the consent agenda, clerk, call or roll?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Resolution Number 11, Councilmember Rovell?
Yeah, I just wanted to roll for, just to recognize, thank Tom for recognizing Ray, he's a great guy.